This is the annual meeting of the town council party tonight. Unfortunately, our mayor can't be here tonight, so it's hard to say good. There's no time to bring up to present your apologies in tonight, but we'll have to wait for the microphone.
Thank you, Chairman, we've got apologies from Joe Wilson from Taffington Community Centre, from Alder Millburn, County Council of Taffington Division, from Patricia Coler, we couldn't say where she was from, from Maria Farrell from Taffington School, and from Billith Snow from Durham County Council Hall. Are there other projects in on this?
The activity day.
The activity day.
Yes. We want to add three on tonight's agenda, which is the minutes of the last meeting.
Yeah, the minutes of the last meeting was on the subject of 2019. Most of you weren't at the meeting. There was a copy of the minutes scattered around the room. Has anyone, can anyone present the meeting as a further recording? Is that Joe with his hand up?
Next on the agenda is one from our leader, Stanley Town Council, Councilor David Marshall.
As leaders of Stanley Town Council, we're working all here. Pleased to see so many here. I'm in group stage, it's most pleasing. And as the Deputy Mayor says, unfortunately, our Mayor Alex Cleck can't be present. It's a little time for Alex to do health problems. As a senior state man and former Chair of the Council, he has done a sterling job as the public face of Stanley Town Council. On behalf of the Council, I would like to record our appreciation for the work he has undertaken. Our aim is to offer a better day for the people of Stanley. It's been a challenge to bring the Council to its firm financial footing. The Council now has a medium term plan in place to establish successful and financially stable Council. This is involved introducing a fully costed staffing structure with evaluated job descriptions. All staff and trade unions have been fully involved in that process. The Council have introduced a living wage policy for all staff and signed the dying inward pledge, and we ensure all staff involved in Council development, their news quite close. The environmental caretakers are back in house. They are doing a great job tackling local environment projects and are working hard to improve the area. We have employed Stanley's own neighbourhood police wardens, complementing the service already provided by the police of Durham County. A full programme of community activities being tried, provided by the Council. Play the part, fun for all the family. Ever popular fireworks display, attended by over six thousand people. Armed Forces Day, World War One commemoration in bloom. Christmas lights, car services. So there's a lot gone on in the last twelve months. The Council is giving support in local neighbourhood areas, including investment in youth and children. The funding of local projects. The Council is taking a brave step. We are for the first time developing a long term plan of grant funding, which will allow funding of core costs for organisations such as cricket clubs, football clubs, village halls. In a straightforward, non bureaucratic way, you won't need a degree to fill in a form to get funding, that'd be simple and straightforward. You won't need to employ specialists to do that, which so often happens with grant funding. So the Council is committed to ensure that funding is available year on year for voluntary organisations who have contributed so much to success for Stanley. To achieve this, a Stanley Fund has been set up, with several people providing money for the project, including our paid Kevin Jones, Police and Crime Commissioner Ron Hall, Durham County's local strategic partnership and this Council. How Brooks will get the money. You're whipped for that, aren't you? I don't hear a run. That followed it around. We intend to continue to help those in our community or caught in austerity financial difficulties by funding advice services, packed house, just for women, shade, bringing together all identified province providers in our area to avoid complication and misuse of money. The Council has a civic hall task group undertaking a review of the past year's activity and looking, along with the civic hall staff, at future programme events in the Alnoll control theatre. We're bringing a cinema back to Stanley. It's almost ready to go, we've written a programme for it. A programme of live shows has been developed. Three local organisations have all benefited from having annual shows in the theatre this year. Stanley Stars, Auxilius Group and Southmore's Theatre of Society. The Council continues to look after our heritage. Miners' memorials with remembrance services organised and support given to the miners' band groups. World War One commemoration being provided on the front street, which can be used for all celebrations in the council area at any time. Support has been given to all war memorial services in the area. We have introduced a financial reporting that enables councillors in public to have a clear picture of whether money is born, providing early indications of under or over budget spending. So correct the facts, action will be taken when necessary. We are committed to becoming a quality status Council in two years. And then of course for us, it's back to the review of the meeting in term plan. So welcome. And as I said, people will follow me on to tell you how the grants scheme want to work. Thank you all.
Right, I won't keep you very long because I know that you're waiting for the main event. And in line with what Councilor Marshall just said, I'll give you just briefly a speak of our expenses in a very clear and brief way rather than onto detail. The spotlight put up there, I apologise if it's a bit too small for you to read, but I'll try and talk you through. Basically, this is just a breakdown of the town council's total budget and a brief overview of what we spend the money on. So the total expenditure for this current financial year that we're in, as you can see from the top number, if you can see, is just over one million pounds, one million one hundred and fifty thousand pounds and nine hundred and seventy eight, of which seven hundred thousand and six, seven hundred and six thousand of that is raised through contributions from local taxation council tax in the precept. The remaining income comes from a mixture of income from the civic hall and from grant, local council tax, support grant that comes from Durham County Council to replace the old housing benefit element of council tax. So the pieces of the pile that you can see on there, that shows you the proportion of our expenditure that goes into different areas. So we spent, the big, the big grey bit of the bottom left is what we spent on operational services, so that's things like our environmental wardens, sorry, environmental caretakers, the neighbourhood wardens, the provision of services like the advice service, things like that. We spent eleven percent, forty two percent of our budget goes on those direct services. We spent eleven percent of our budget on grant funding, that's in the current financial year. We spent eight percent on the civic hall. We spent fifteen percent on this, on this snappy area called democracy, stroke publicity, stroke assets, stroke external services, which is just me lumping together some small ones because, because there'd be title of places to buy otherwise. We spent three percent of our annual precept servicing load, which we've taken. And the remaining twenty five percent is on administration, which is the fiscal administration of local services and financial administration of the council service. So that's, that's where the money, that's where the money very broadly goes and people, there are some shifts, obviously, with alternate chairs, which give a more detailed breakdown. And we will publish a more detailed breakdown online for the report. But actually, I was, I was told that about one morning to hear me talk about numbers in my new chair this evening. So if you've got questions at the end, you can ask them in the open forum specific about the budgets. We will publish more detailed figures on the, on the internet, of course. And with that out of the way, I would like to introduce you to Michelle Cooper from the County Durham Community Foundation, who is going to talk about the Stanley Community Fund.
Thank you. Can you all hear me okay? Yeah. Great. Tech failed me, i.e. an old printer, so I'm going to try and do a few notes that I have off the phone here, so I really apologise if this goes wrong. I think my briefing was also quite light, wasn't it, in terms of what I was doing today? So hopefully I have everything covered because I think this has been built up quite a lot. But the Stanley Fund is really quite exciting and it's really a culmination of events that pretty much happened a year ago. Kevin and I met, I was one week ago, as Chief Executive at the County Durham Community Foundation, and we basically came up with some crazy ideas, I think you said at the time, yes? And it's come real. So what we hope to have, and this will be launching in April, is a fund that is dedicated to Stanley Parish Council, community groups and charities. It will be at least, looking at the way the numbers are going, a hundred and twenty thousand pounds that is available for those groups in the Stanley area. That funding has come together through, as Councilor Marshall has said, the support of the town council. It's also come through your action area partnership, the police, Victor Ryan, Commissioner PCBC, I never get that right, I'm sorry. It's also come from money that we, as the community foundation, are willing to put in ourselves because we believe so much in community groups. It's what we do, it's what we do day in and day out. And for those of you that don't know the community foundation, I think a lot of you will, there's a lot of familiar names on a bit of paper. But just for those of you that don't, we are a grant making foundation. We only make grants in the north east area, predominantly in County Durham and Downton. And the last financial year we awarded, actually this financial year just coming to an end, I'll stick with those numbers, will be just over three million in grants to local community groups like yourselves. But interestingly, of that three million, I checked the numbers today, only forty two thousand has gone to groups in Stanley. And actually, it's probably nearer thirty eight thousand has gone to groups in Stanley. And we also offer relief in need funding, which has gone to individuals, and that was about four thousand pounds. So I hope you can see that by the launch of this fund, if we can get a hundred and twenty five thousand pounds into that, which we have for this year, and we can see visibility on that for the next two years as well, thanks to the support of the Council, you will have at least triple the amount of funding available to you to apply to the community foundation for. It does not stop any of the groups in this room still applying to us for all those other funds that you have come to us before in the past. So winter warmth, I think packed house is here, I can see shade here, who recently presented to me for a growth and resilience fund, that will run again next year. The NHS funds, you all apply to those funds and you can continue to do that. So that forty thousand pounds that's coming to this region will continue to come into the region. But the beauty for groups in this region is that you effectively have access to your own dedicated pot as well. Do you know what? Phone's gone dead, I've just made all of this up as it's going on. So let's see where we got to, shall we? So it is for charities, it is for community groups. Fundamentally, we want it to be a community fund, so it will have a community panel. And part of today's act, talk really is, if you like, to invite people to apply to be on that community panel. We truly believe that this money has to be owned by the people of Stanley, for the people of Stanley, and it's not for us sitting over in just outside a city centre to decide where that money goes. So we would love for representatives, who may be residents, who may be on community groups, who may own businesses, because businesses are ultimately where we're also going to go and talk to, including this fund. We would like them to put themselves forward to be part of the community panel that helps decide where the funding goes for this fund. There will be representatives on that panel from the funders, and I hope you'd agree that that is only fair, they're putting the money up and therefore they have a say, but fundamentally, the balance of the panel will be very much community led. And I would say if any of the groups are worried that there is a conflict of interest and that you can't sit on the panel because you want to bid for that funding, that is fine. There will be processes in place that allow you to declare conflicts of interest, to step back if you ever want to apply for the funding. So don't be afraid, put yourself up as a panel member, even if you are a key part of a community group, okay? The fund will effectively be quite innovative, I hope. It's always hard to, it's easy to say that, it's hard to make that happen and we need your help to make that happen. I would say that most of the stakeholders have been fantastic in helping us make this happen. We want to look at multi year funding, so this isn't just about funding a successful project once and then saying, bad luck, you've proved it works, there's no more funding for that. So if there is a successful project, we will look at funding that as part of the scheme. Core costs, capital costs can also be considered. Grants will range from two thousand pounds up to ten thousand pounds. And if you think about that multi year model, there will be breaks, so there'll be a review every year, and if you're not delivering, we will fundamentally pull the funding. But effectively, if you are a group and if you can come up with a good strategic plan, you will have visibility on core funding for a number of years. That is the concept that we want to try and bring into this. The funds will, the purpose of the funds, the charitable purpose of the funds, will align with a lot of the town councils strategic aims, but always with a social impact element. So if you've got regeneration, it's about social value regeneration. It's about how do you get people into work? How do those groups that do amazing things with people, encouraging them to learn, to read, to get into work? The fund can help you do that because that's social regeneration. It will look at environment, but it isn't about funding all community parks, it's about coming up with creative ideas around those community parks and how you engage your community to help deliver that. Fundamentally, the fund will help young people, it will help older people, it will help the groups of Stanley to decide where that funding needs to go fundamentally. And that's the whole point of bringing it back to the community panel. The people of Stanley are going to decide where this fund goes. We will put a chair in place to help keep it all effective, frankly, to remove any personal agendas, but this is about Stanley owning and delivering on this fund. Our role will be to help manage that process, to promote the fund, to help groups on the ground to actually apply for the fund. So I'm going to commit some of my staff's resource to try and work with groups in this region. There is an application form. I had this horrible feeling that David said there wouldn't be an application form. There is an application form, but anyone who applies to us through the website link, hopefully you're all reassured that it is quite simple and it is quite effective in terms of its process. So that will stay the same. So for those of you that don't know the website, it's www, lots ahead, there are downscribbling, cdcf.org.uk. We'll push and we'll promote the fund. I'm sure the Stanley Town Council social media will do the same, so I wouldn't worry too much about the detail. But definitely, cdcf.org.uk, that's where the application form will be launched in April, new financial year this fund is for. There will be panels throughout the year, so this isn't about getting in once and thinking you've missed it for the year, okay? So there will be opportunities on a regular basis. We anticipate the first panel will sit back June time. So start thinking, have a look at those terms of reference when that fund goes up there on the website, see how you can think it can work for you, have a think about some strategic ideas for grant making. I think some people have worked with me in the past, in a previous life, around some people with fresh ideas, and the growth in resilience is the next iteration of that. What I hope is we can kind of in a way bring some of that energy that fresh ideas have, that the growth in resilience has, and that is about unlocking the potential of the charitable groups to do what they know is best for the region. And hopefully we can make it real. And I think it's amazing that with the support of people like the Council and Kevin Jones, who does have a fund with us, we'll probably talk to you a little bit about what he thinks about the fund. I think it's amazing that we've been able to pull this together. And what I'm told is pretty quick time, under twelve months, is that right? It feels like it's been a long journey, but it's pretty exciting that we are now just literally a few weeks away from making it real, and hopefully you guys will help us make that real. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Michelle, for that. Can I, for giving one thing, to say thank you to everyone in this room, because there's one great thing about Stanley is it has its problems, but it has fantastic people who do things and you never sit back in the moment and get on and do things in the community. And, you know, there are many communities, I think, that would die for that type of effort and resilience. You do it not because you are getting any financial gain out of it or any personal costs, you do it because you care about what you're doing. So that, I think, is something that I certainly think is valuable, and that's why I think this type of fund would, and it will thrive in Stanley. Now, Michelle did, I do come daft ideas sometimes, and this is one where Michelle and I met over a year ago. Cantor Foundation manages a number of funds. It's unique, I think, in terms of, a lot of them are quite small. Now, those funds then are basically people either give money, they invest it and then distribute it to communities throughout Cantor. Now, that's easy if you were, for example, in the south east or London, where there's large donors, companies in London that will give, or individuals in some cases, which will give money. A lot of the funds that the community foundation manages are personal legacies or individual donation, like the funds that I've got, or individual companies that actually want to ensure, that they want to give something back to the community. Most of them are people, or people in this room, groups that have actually had money from the foundation, know that some of those funds are earmarked for, you know, education, young people or certain activities. But I don't think we've got yet a community fund which is for a town, which I think this is going to be unique. And can I thank the town council, Carol and David, for their support of this initiative? Because in year one, clearly, that money is going to be very important in terms of you having a sector. The other important thing about this, it's got to be community led, it's got to be led by the community people that are actually involved, not only in the groups, but to see what the priorities are for Stanley. And, you know, and there's a lot of negative and cynicism about it, it's easy to be negative about things. I think this, if this takes off, could be quite exciting. It's actually about making sure that local people set priorities, they also allow to raise funds for it. Because another side to this will be the money that's been earmarked, obviously given out in grants. But the way the foundation works is, is if we get money donated to the fund, it will go into a, we call it endowment fund, which will then generate money for, you know, future years. So we've got to target businesses, we've got to target individuals and others who want to give to the community fund. So that legacy goes on year after year and year. And with the community foundation, you know, the administration, it takes the hands of the town council, because in the sense of why couldn't the town council run this? Well, it could, which is secondly, of course, if you've got already an organisation, a well established track record with expertise in this area, then I think that's why the beauty of the foundation is there. So my clear message is, you know, support this, get involved, certainly apply for grants, but if you know of individuals who want to contribute to the fund, companies or individuals, then please come forward. It's your fund and the difference it will make, you're making every day anyway with the work that you're doing. With the long term financial backing that this will give organisations, at least it'll ensure that the work that you do is sustainable. And also, there may be new groups that want to set up and new initiatives that need to be set up in Stanley, which aren't there yet, this is an opportunity to do that. So please get involved and make sure that it's successful. This is year one, there'll be problems, there always is with setting up new initiatives like this, but remember the one key thing, which you know you all do, is this is about supporting your local community, supporting people in that community, but also making your community a better place to go.
I think, and I will be brief because Councilor Marshall covered pretty much everything I was going to talk about, so I won't keep you too long. Just to piggyback the Stanley Community Fund, which I think clearly that's the reason the place that you came in, trying to find out details about that. You know, the town council's mainly invested in fifty thousand pounds into that fund, which, as Michelle has told you, through contributions from other people, the local AP, the MP, the police and crime commission, other businesses, has already more than doubled in the first year, so that's, you know, that's a clearer, there's clearly more money going into the community than there would be if we just kept that money ourselves. But we've also kept back a smaller fund, which we've called the Strategic Grant Fund, a play five thousand pounds, which will, which will, you know, as, as, as Michelle said, the lower limit on this fund is two thousand pounds. Clearly, there's still that little gap for small, small, small grants, where you've got a community group that might only need a couple of hundred pounds a year, or just to keep a specific grant group or whatever going. That's what the strategic fund is going to be for. The application process will be very simple, for any local group that's ever filled in a BIF form, it's going to be a very similar type of form. There will be, there will be regular callouts for that, and I think there'll be a panel which meets three times a year, so three, three will call out for that. We've put a load of forms, application forms on the front desk, so that people can pick one up on their way up if they wish. There won't be enough for everyone that's in this room. So if you would like a form and they're all gone by the time you get, you get there, just speak to myself, Nicola or Alan at the back, and we'll take the details and make sure we'll get a form sent out to you, that's no problem. So I'll just quickly blast through this, this is just to brief, a brief overview of things that we're planning for the coming financial year. Obviously, we've spoken about the community fund and now the strategic grants fund. We are clearly going to continue to provide the events, play in the park, which we provide, fireworks, which we provide, the work we do with memorials, both the All the Warriors and the Miners' Warriors, which we support too now, because we have the, taken ownership of the Louisa Morrison Memorial, as well as, as well as running the commemoration for West Stanley. That's just other members' pens, it's the heavy side plaque there and no more. We obviously also continue to fund on an ongoing basis, the money advice, citizens' advice services, the attached youth service, which we've given multi year funding packages so they've got sustainability and they can, they can plan their services in advance. Obviously, we continue to support packed house and just women's centre, I don't mind the slide, we're doing that as well. All the stuff that we're doing is basically based on a medium term plan, which had, which had themes of campaign of regeneration, and that's, as Michelle said, social as well as physical. The environment, government, providing with events, people, supporting community facilities, providing good value for money, treating our staff fairly, communicating more with residents, and promoting the support and the town's heritage. Hopefully, you can see that everything that's been talked about tonight is supporting at least one of those things. So that's the end of the presentation, we're pleased to hear. The, the, the next part of the meeting is the open forum. Now, the way this works is that, is that anyone in the room can ask all the questions they want about anything to do with Stanley, this isn't a Stanley Town Council meeting, this is a Stanley meeting, this is your meeting. So we've got a wide range of people here, we've got county councillors, town councillors, we have a local MP, a police inspector to pop out, we'll be back in a minute, so if any police issues, we'll talk to you at the end. So it just opened it up really to, to the public, if you, the deputy town mayor will chair the meeting, so if you have a question to ask, please put your hand up, and if the deputy mayor wants to speak, please say who you are and whereabouts, whereabouts you're from, and we'll crack on. Carol? Carol?
Okay, so we've been talking about last year, the thing about the vote, that the Town Council taking more back. That's not a question, the one I'm asking is, has the Town Council had a vote of taking control of its market back for the Durham Town Council? Because that's a massive income generation, the rent's a bonus, we are here and we're funded. Has the council had a vote of that taking back the house?
Kerry, I have actually required about when the contract is up for renewal for the town council. It's actually May twenty twenty-one. And before that happens, the council will consider whether or not they wish to involve themselves in bidding for that. But really, it's not happening until the end of the contract. So it will be something to get discussed with the council.
Has anyone else got a question like that?
I'll try and, I mean, the Town Council supports a number of local groups. We don't ourselves deliver anything for kicking special education needs. We do support groups like Justin Women's Centre, like Packed House, like the Stars Youth Service and they will work with all kinds of people, with all different kinds of needs. I think we've got some of the people in the room, I don't know if you've got any of the people who are special needs.
I'm having a bit of a dive, just keeping his head down. I wonder if we had a bit of a dive, I wonder if you would have some more information done about that? Because the reason of all the toddler groups and the special needs and that, they're all very old people. It's getting different little community centres, I don't know more than a couple of minutes.
Also, I would know that the Durham Town Council, through their work for our commission and framework, and one year again, they might send new people. It's about identifying where the meaning is and then offering up the discussions. And really, that's something I would look at further down the line through their work. But we'd have to get into it for more information through Helen.
The problem is, you know, they've got a lot of demands, you know, that, you know, there's a bunch of all these kids who are really providing young people with that. You know, when, especially if they're able to tell the truth, they're like, oh, that's, that's a chance for that. Support the community, support the family, so that probably is the plan, what part is it?
And still have to see this, you know, that we can, for the, for the group. And we are seeing trying to identify if the family are part of the group or, or the other group. We find that we can't have this, so we're, we are trying to sort of, I mean, I guess, but in a lot of cases, we have to try.
Is that business, is that just, we want to see the details at the end, find out if they're able to help. Or, or, um, what, it's, yes? I think that could be a great example, what an initiative, if you're quite full. Try and find some groups who can offer our service, that manage that kind of class of idea.
I'm thinking of, obviously, I have a list of special people, which is why I thought that it'd be a good school and certainly going to be a good one for that. Because the, you know, it's hard to, it's a lot in Stanley or other areas itself.
Certainly, you want to listen to, you know, people who are behind you. Forget all the names you asked for yourself, of course. Does anyone else got a question?
Well, it's a question of, I'm sorry, it's a provision from the young people. Stanley was instrumental in creating and continuing to supply and find kind of support for the mini-police. Now, this is now not only national, but it's becoming international. And yet, Stanley, where it was actually formed in the first instance, pulls it down. Is there any possibility that it starts again? Especially given the fact that small children in a little school in France are actually carrying knives to skin? Is this something which might help to alleviate this?
I'll ask the question, I wasn't anticipating a question for our, I'll ask the question, I wonder if this is interesting part in the narration that? And I'll mention that, that's all.
I think, I mean, we supported the High Sheriff, obviously, the other year before, was very passionate about them in place. And everything I've learned about her, it really is the schools have to take a lot of the initiative. And I don't know if that is something that's fallen away for some of the challenges. But please get involved, but a lot of the primary schools have to take the initiative as well and I think they're struggling on some of the demands. Does that sound familiar?
No, sorry, in Stanley, the police are involved, yes, the schools are involved, but the funding given to the Town Council, that I understand, is all.
I think that's the case across a lot of schools and it is the schools themselves are trying to find ways of actually continuing that initiative because they recognise that the value in it. I'm just putting another model out there, that some other schools across County Durham have kind of funded it themselves and driven some of the initiative.
I think, well, just come back, I think what Rob's alluded to here, we did about fifteen sixteen, or after about a year ago, we did support a number of schools, the police boycotted uniform etcetera, we had a launch event, a civic call. And we had made a bunch of provision in a following year to try and bring more schemes, schools to the scheme locally. The, the, the factor that prevented us from doing that was a couple of factors. But the first one is that, is that, you know, really, the mini-police is something that has to be supported by the actual police. You know, it's a, it's a week-wide support to fund a uniform and stuff for the kids. In terms of the activity, that needs to be supported by the Conservative itself. And obviously, there's a limited capacity to do that because, as you know, we've got too many police in town in Stanley. They were supporting those original school people on, and then they didn't have the capacity to sort of do that to the other. I think it would exacerbate, I know Greg Johnson was the person that was standing behind the scheme first, but he retired, I think maybe he just got off a little bit. We would definitely ask him, Craig, the chairman of the Labour League, that year, for him to bring forward both of the schemes. And we were asked to fund the Minibus, which the council wanted to do. We asked for a local scheme to be reported, it then came forward. So it's one of those things where I think there was a little bit of interest lost with the mini-police. And it was a question, the council were constantly thinking, "Oh, well, in the future."
Is it not something that perhaps between the police and the council can look at again? Especially bearing in mind the current knife crime and also the fact that the mini-police started in Stanley and as I said before, it's now not only in national, it's becoming international.
I think Inspector Stewart will certainly take it away and come back to this later.
So the development, the cultural assets, while Nicola even now doing the Durham Town Council responsibility or the Town Council may have an answer to it. And it's with the draws to the new McDonald's Centre, absolutely. Built on a very specific sort of style, what the council was, because it had a lot of problems because it was twenty-four hours. The emergency security laws in it. So we're asked, where we're getting built now, it's a footfall, near footfall, and puts a lot of effort into it. And I'm just wondering, has there been a risk assessment done on the people that are making the, and how they're going to manage it? For instance, if they take a big camera, because they're leaving it on in operation. I'm just wondering, has any of the authorities enforced with the state franchise, what is going, we've got a plan for, for safety more than anything?
Well, you're right, the Town Council hasn't been involved with those. Obviously, the local planning authority is the Town Council. I don't know, I think there is specific, I think there is specific authorities, but if not, we're outside the question. I have to ask, right, it's quite, certainly will have a plan to be taken. I think it's the only person that's, you know, suggested this might be an issue. So I'm sure there's a lot of, but it is, is there anything about the, 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 the?
Yeah, I mean, just to just to go to the back of my mind, so you mentioned in the last four weeks, the town council about problems, because of the footfall, telling people who are through the hardship, that the other past. So I think it's, it needs to be addressed somewhere along the line, particularly the last four years, it's going to be that, the footfall, a lot of the years.
But, I mean, yeah, not that we don't know what's going to happen, but obviously, what you're highlighting is something which is foreseeable and I'm sure that the Town Council, the Town Council will also have the same. So let's, we will, you know, we have contact with it, we will ask the question, we will get the answers.